Happy you're here.
I'm glad to be here, honestly.
Okay, it looks like we're live.
I think you guys are all set.
Okay, then.
I can holler at you as it's not the doctor or I guess.
We'll call the meeting to order and we'll call. John Mill, here. Michael Shaw.
I'm here.
Mike Carl.
Here.
Joe Johnson.
Here.
Ron Kerr, here. Has everyone had a chance to read the meeting minutes from February the 17th?
Yes.
Yes.
Any corrections that need to be made? No. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I would like to approve a motion that we allow the amendments from last, from February 17th.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, meeting minutes approved. And before we delve into public comments on items that are not on this agenda, which are public with us right now, we have a new individual that has joined our commission, so I think it would be fair to have a brief introduction session so that we can meet you and you can meet us.
Yeah. Should I stand? Y'all see me okay? I'm John Miola. I just moved here April 2020, right in the thick of things, which was nice and fun. Just lived over a few blocks there with my wife and little dog. And I work for full-time at a winery called Domain De Bruy, which is up in Dayton, on the top of the field, right next to Winter still and Domain Serene. I've not had any public commission meeting experience before, but I have been managers of wineries and wine clubs and business banking specialists for many years now, so I hope to make Lafayette better and be the best I can.
You're welcome. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Mike?
What are we going around?
Just a brief introduction for him, because John would like to know who we are.
Okay, continue that. Mike Shaw, I moved here to Lafayette about three years ago and found out that I've got a long history in Lafayette. My great-great-great-grandfather came out in 1845 and settled here. And he was here 12 years until he felt that it was too crowded, and he went off to Garibaldi. And he named Garibaldi and was the first postmaster of Tillamook County. So I've got some history here.
Little, little, close down with history.
And I got involved because, you know, I thought I was retired, and that's not true. I like to be involved and I like to promote healthy, responsible change. I'm Mike Carl. I moved here in June of 2010. And I've been a member of this committee since 2011. Retired post office supervisor. And I also, I thought this would be an opportunity for me to make my community a little better.
Thank you. And my name is Ron, and I've lived in Lafayette since March of 2005. I've served under the planning commission, I believe it was September, October of that year, and much like Mike, my motivation was to participate in my community and help promote positive change, because we all know change is going to happen. To promote change that is as open as possible, to allow people to enjoy the community to the fullest extent as they can, but also try to, you know, have a guiding hand on it, because for those, if you want, if you want to have something happen in a positive way, you gotta be involved. If you're not involved, then it's going to happen around you, and you may or may not like those types of changes. So that's kind of my background and how I fit into the equation.
And I'm Joe Johnson. I am going on six years Lafayette. And I have only been on the commission since last October. So pretty new to all this and no public experience either. That's all neat to me too. But yeah, I just, I thought it would be a good way to get to know the community and participate and give back, basically.
So I suppose on behalf of the commission, welcome, thank you for joining us. You, remember, you volunteered.
I did.
Get yourself into this one.
I know.
And then I suppose I should not deny you the pleasure of letting Jim Jack say a few words about himself.
So as you can tell, I'm still kind of hanging on to this stuff. Both my wife and I are older, and she has the underlying health situation, so I don't know how long I'll stick with it, but as long as I feel comfy, then I'll keep hanging it on my face. I've been in Oregon planning for over 40 years and have been assigned, well, I work at the Mid-Wellamette Valley Council of Governments, and we do the planning for 21 or 22 small cities in Marion, Pope, and Hill counties. In semi-retirement, I started working there in '08, right during the recession, and was assigned to Lafayette as one of my cities, and I'm also in Sheridan. And I'm filling in for the fourth time actually in Dundee. And Sublimity, St. Paul, who else? Can't remember them all, but I'm trying to remember them, but anyway. So whenever needed, I do whatever work is assigned to me, whatever the city has come in for development applications, or like with what we're doing tonight, amending the development code, or at least talking about possibly amending the development code. I don't know, I guess that's about it. I live in Kaiser, been there 38 years or something. And so I enjoy small cities, I enjoy the place that they are each in. One thing just to kind of keep in mind is when I got here and prior to working at the COG, I did a short stint with a small civil engineering firm. But prior to that, for 20 years, I was at Tuolotin. And there, we didn't have to go out and recruit or try to bring business in. They were always knocking on our doors, subdivisions, multifamily developments. It just was 20 years of constant go-go. But when I got here, I realized that, okay, it doesn't seem that Lafayette has an industrial history. There isn't like a sawmill that used to be here that still is hanging around. You know, it's kind of like McCord over here a block away or two is maybe the manufacturing in the city. And so with no manufacturing, there's the other option, oh, participate in the wine country economy. The city's in the heart of the north end of Gambel County. It's not like Willamette or Sheridan that are at the south end, which is completely different. And so I realized, no, there's no tasting rooms, there's no this or that, like what you would find in Dundee, for example, or Carlton. And so Dundee had their own kind of agent of change. And Carlton also, I forget the guy's name now that started Carlton, but he kind of discovered the city and went in and remodeled and created, and all of a sudden they caught on, and now there's several wine country-related businesses in downtown. So I don't know why it hasn't happened here, but one would think any day. And so at some point, I'm sure it'll happen, but in the meantime, the city from 90 to 2000 doubled in population. I mean, you never have a city double. And then from 2000 to 2010, including the recession, it didn't quite double, but it went up like 50%. Well, that is even crazy. Cities don't normally, in even 10 years, go up, you know, 50% in their population. And so ever since 2010, the city has continued to grow. And at the north end, that 68th subdivision is just another example of the city continuing to grow population-wise. And so it's good to know that there's new residences, but at the same time, you kind of wonder, hmm, there's no multifamily. Just one, Abbey Ridge, I guess it is. Up there at 12th or 13th and Bridge Street. And it's been there 30 years or more. So at some point, I would assume there will be some size of an apartment project. Two years ago, Sheridan had a 72-unit, three-story apartment project come in and get approved. So I guess one of the reasons is that lenders don't like to lend to build apartments in small cities, because they prefer to lend for development in larger cities where the jobs are, that the people that would be in the apartments would likely have. So anyway, that seems to be kind of breaking down, but anyway. So don't know what might be happening in the future, but at least we have our development code and our comprehensive plan, and as development projects come in, then they'll be reviewed and approved, and just about always, and approval includes conditions of approval. So anyway, kind of a little longer than the rest of you took, but tried to give a background on the city.
Hey, Jim.
From a planning perspective.
I have a question, Jim, because you mentioned something. Do you know why the population doubled in that timeframe?
Subdivisions?
What, what made at that time Lafayette attractive to, or for people that, you know, had to go to McMinnville or?
Yeah.
Public, public surrounding communities, the cost that would have been here at the time would have been a little less.
Some communities have a bunch of land, vacant land, but the owners don't want to sell, because if they hang on to it, it's going to be worth a little more next year, and if they bought the land as an investment or a retirement situation, then they're going to hang on to it until they die, or until they decide they've got to sell it and retire. And part of it is the land costs in smaller communities is generally lower, and even lower than just nobody from McMinnville. So it's really hard to know, other than the city was discovered, and whoever owned the land up there, kind of just at the crest of the hill and dropping down the north side. When you've got land for sale and it's cheaper than land elsewhere, and when that location is within commuting distance of jobs, then a home builder or a subdivider will say, okay, I'm talking to my banker. And if the banker says, oh, okay, yeah, I'll loan money to you to do a subdivision, and of all places, Lafayette. And so off we go. I don't know. Our mayor may have another take or a better explanation as to what was going on 20, 25 years ago.
You know, my dad built a lot of these subdivisions up here. And it was just, you know, it just said, just like you said, it's the luck of the draw, the land was the time available. You know, and, you know, developers have always expanded out five or six years, so.
Yeah.
You know.
And one thing just to be aware of now, in Oregon, for a long time, just had a lot of small subdividers, small home builders. It's not like California where you have a huge company that needs to buy 1,000 acres and build 10,000 houses to be able to make money. And kind of now, in these last whatever number of years, the big national homebuilding companies have come into Oregon. And down in Sheridan, again, the city just approved a 20-acre, 112-lot subdivision. And the, let's see, LGI is the home builder that's going to build the homes. They're like the 10th largest homebuilding company in the United States. So at least that is an example in a small city that's farther away from the heart of things than Lafayette or any of these cities up here in the north end of the county. But they've got to make money, they got people on their payroll, so they say, go out, find land, build houses, and that's what they do, wherever they can find the land. And down there, that landowner was ready to sell. It was a, well, probably a late 50s, early 60s guy with two sisters, I guess it is, and they had all agreed that, okay, yeah, now's the time to sell. So hard to know, but the market works in mysterious ways sometimes.
Okay. So now that we got the introductions open and welcome, tonight's meeting is a work session. And we'll be discussing the issue of the accessory dwelling unit standards. Like last year, we adopted a, call it a basic or preliminary standard, that has been guiding, and it was brought up that maybe we should take a look at it again. Maybe there are things that could be cleaned up, fleshed out, maybe need an additional thought, and that's certainly worthwhile to look at, because, well, the concept of ADUs is here in Oregon. It's not going to go away. It has a purpose and a place. So since it has a purpose and a place, at least under state law, then we as the community need to come up with smart ways of being able to use it as a tool, and something that not only helps the state, but helps us as well as a community. So on that note, I'll try to, if you want to speak, I'll try to, you know, raise your hand or wave at me or something. I'll try to keep things moving along, but I also am to a great extent, open to free discussion as well, at least as some of you know. So kind of try to guide it a little bit, but not get too heavy-handed or carried away. And on that note, Jim has prepared background for us, so if you could briefly go over that. And then maybe go over briefly, and then if anybody like John or Joe has some additional comment or wants you to flesh out, then flesh it out.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not going to say much about these earlier things. I assume you've all read it. And we really need to spend our time talking about the standards themselves, so the background heading on the first page, we were last year, kind of toward the end of the year, looking at taking away the parking requirement and the ownership requirement from ADUs, because the legislature passed a bill saying, no, local governments can't require off-site or off-street parking, and that the owner occupy one of the units on the property. And during that hearing process at the commission, there were a couple of comments by, I don't know, a couple of commissioners about the standards, and it was kind of like, well, we're really focusing on just these two that we need to delete. But because it looked like there could be some interest in the commission looking at the rest of the standards, we just kind of saved this, and so now it's back. And the idea is to take a look at the standards, and if we think that one or more of them should be amended, fine, if we think that one or more of them could be deleted, that's fine. It seems in small cities that ADUs are not catching on, like in the metro area, particularly Portland. There are, as far as I know, no ADUs in Lafayette. There are two that I'm aware of, that just recently came in, in Dundee. None in Sheridan, none in like Sublimity. I've had several people inquire, but I think what's going on is with the cost of building, construction being so high, people are thinking, yeah, I'd like to, and, oh, a great idea, I can, you know, generate some revenue or have some place for somebody I know, or even that I don't know, to live. And so then they check in with a contractor and find out what the cost is, and they just say, oh, well, I guess I'm not going to do that. At least that's my take on why, in smaller communities anyway, there are very few ADUs going in. The bottom of page one is just a little bit of background on the bills and things. It started in 2017, yeah, 2017. The legislature passed a bill saying all the cities over 2,500 have to allow ADUs, and you can subject them to reasonable standards. And so then a couple of years later, the legislature said, oh, reasonable. Now, we don't think parking and the ownership is a reasonable standard. So they passed a bill saying you can't do that. But another thing that's in the background is all housing is needed housing is the term in the Oregon revised statute. And for needed housing, you can only subject those to clear and objective standards. The idea is that needed housing is needed, it needs to be built and so forth. And if you have a subjective standard, particularly for something like an apartment or an ADU, and a local community says, oh, well, we just don't like apartments. So every time they come in, we'll use that subjective standard and say, no, you don't meet that, denied. Oh, well then, no new housing. Same thing with ADUs. The city could use just one subjective standard to deny all the ADUs that might be proposed, and all of a sudden, you get no ADUs, even though there would be a demand. So moving on, kind of the middle of page two, there's some ADU issues. And I'm not going to go through any of those. It again has some background to what the bills and things said. On page four, there's a historical setting, and granny flats or mother-in-law apartments. That's kind of what the long time ago terms were. And I know my grandmother on my mother's side came, stayed with us for a while before she went to a nursing home. My wife's family had her grandmother on her mother's side stay with them for a while. And it wasn't like a separate unit. It was just, you know, a relative of the family, a close relative coming in and living in part of the house. And so the modern idea of ADUs is more than that, is you can have a standalone structure or part of the house, and you don't need to have a relative come, or a good friend, or you know, something like Uncle Bob, who never seemed to really be a relative, but the family was always real close and always going back and forth and seeing each other. So ADUs today have a legal definition and some regulatory site boards to ensure that they can actually happen. So middle of page five, there's some issues, kind of around the types of structures and whether or not you can allow manufactured homes, the size of an ADU, parking garages, do you require a garage? Driveways, how many driveways might you allow? And more on page six. So finally, on page seven, we get to the actual standards that are in our code, and there's a bunch of them. A through M. And that's even with the parking and the ownership gone. Some cities have like none, or two or three, and others have a whole bunch. So first, I'm just going to mention each one, and then we can come back and talk about them. So the first one, A, is kind of a restating of the definition, just saying that an ADU can be detached from the primary dwelling, or it can be part of, a conversion of. And if it's detached, it can be a separate building by itself with just the ADU in it. Or it could be like bigger, older cities like Portland, you see a garage or a former carriage house. And then on the second floor, there's enough room, and the second floor has the ADU in it. So based on the state definition, ADUs could be all kinds of different things. Number of units, the state law says that we have to allow at least one, and that's what we allow. Some cities say, oh yeah, two or three, that's fine. Others say, no, one's enough. Floor area. Up to a city to decide if they want to regulate the size. Here we say 800 square feet, or 40% of the primary dwelling's size. So if you have a thousand-square-foot primary dwelling, which is kind of small, you could have a 400 square foot ADU. If you have a 2,000-square-foot house, which is a little more common, then you could have an 800 square foot ADU. And if you have more than a 2,000-square-foot house, you could have 40%. Oh, except we say no more, no more than 800 square feet. So if you have a real big house, you know, 4,500 square feet, and 40% of what roughly, 1,600 square foot ADU? No, you can only have 800 square feet. And then D is just a kind of a catch-all to remind everybody that if you build one of these, you got to comply with the building code. The height can't be any higher than the primary dwelling. Parking, we still have a parking standard, but it's only when the developer of the ADU wants to have parking. We can't require them to put in additional parking for the ADU, but if they choose to do so, then this, these standards say how that parking should be done. Basically, it's got to be paid, and depending on the access, kind of whatever works for the access is okay. G at the bottom of page seven, it shall comply with the development standards of the underlying zoning district. Again, just kind of a reminder that whatever the standards are, you got to meet them. But because you're an ADU doesn't mean all of the standards of the zone go out the door.
And that would be things like setbacks, lock, setbacks, lock, two things that come into play.
So then the next one, H, an ADU shall not be a mobile home or a manufactured home or a storage container. But it clarifies that a modular dwelling is permitted. I, existing legal non-conforming dwellings may be converted to an ADU. So we might have in a residential zone, a residence, and maybe it's, doesn't meet the setback standard. Or maybe it's too high, or maybe whatever else is going on. And so this says that a legal non-conforming dwelling can be used as an ADU. And that term legal non-conforming, basically that goes back to non-conformities, which attorneys refer to as vested rights. So if a house was built legally, you know, when it was built, met all of whatever standards applied, then the city comes along and puts it in a residential zone and says, you got to have a, I don't know, what, a 10-foot setback somewhere, and this house doesn't have that. Oh, well, the application of the zoning district to that property created non-conformity. Okay, well, that's okay, because when the house was built, it met everything. It's just that the city changed the rules, so to speak, and so it's got this one thing that doesn't meet the current standard. And so the city made it clear that if that exists, that does not prevent that house from being converted, you know, the acre, the basement, or part, you know, the back end or something, being converted to an ADU. The next one, I, again, existing legal non-conforming dwellings may be converted to, oops, where you did that, not to J. The ADU front door shall not be on a building elevation facing a public or private street. That comes from some folks, some cities saying, well, yeah, we want our That comes from some folks, some cities saying, well, yeah, we want our single-family residential areas to look like single-family residential areas. So a front door, fine, that's typical. Two front doors, oh, well, that makes it look like a duplex or an apartment or something. And so that, some cities say, yep, we'll have the ADU with its door not facing the street. It'll face the side or potentially even the back. And that way, when you're looking at the building from the street, you'll see just the front door of the house. You won't see the front door of the ADU and you then might not even know there's an ADU there. Uh, K is the ADU shall not be located in a front yard or a side yard adjacent to a street. In most communities, the houses are up pretty close to the front. The front yard setback is there and then there's the house. But in some cases, you have usually on a really old property with an older house, the house might be sent way back. And so that would leave room and have like a, here, our current front yard setback is fifteen feet. And so there might be enough room to put the ADU in front of the primary house. Oh, well, that would kind of look weird. And again, give the impression that, oh, this might be a multifamily neighborhood. It looks like there's two houses on this one lot. So mainly due to the look, some cities say, no, you can't do an ADU in a front yard. And then same situation for a side yard adjacent to a street, the corner lot situation. Don't allow ADUs over on that side yard adjacent to a street. Um, number L is a detached ADU shall be separated from the primary dwelling at least six feet. In the building code, there is no requirement for buildings to be a certain distance apart. In some cases, depending one or both of the, you know, I guess it's if they're up to within three feet, they don't even need the proverbial two-hour fire rated firewall. And so uh, if you're closer than three feet, you would have to have a firewall. In case one building catches on fire, then the other one won't catch on fire as fast. It'll still catch on fire, but it'll give time for the fire department to come and put the fire out. Kind of like earthquake standards, they're not made to keep the building standing up in perfect condition. They're only made to keep the building to hold together enough to let the people get out. And the building could be a total loss, but at least it would not have pancaked down and killed everybody. It would still be standing and tipped over or in really bad shape, not anything that you would remodel to bring it back. You demolish it, build brand new. So the six feet, uh, some cities have a separation like that. Because for whatever reason, they just don't think it's a good idea to have a garage or an ADU or whatever right up next to the house. They want it some distance away and in Lafayette, that turns out to be six feet.
And somewhere in the past, I remember a conversation occurring that some of this building separation. Aside from uh fire burn time ratings, fire code, fire code also comes, comes into play in the sense that a certain amount of space between structures, so that if a firefighter needs to pass between those structures with equipment and gear, they can comfortably do so. Now, I don't remember whether that was five feet, six feet, four feet, but there is some guide, there would be some guidance in fire code that says, hey, this type of pathway width gives a firefighter that space, an extra maneuvering room that they need, and it's greater but not excessive. So maybe that's where that six feet is partially derived from.
Yeah, and that comes from the older fire code situation. Uh, those kinds of separations and things aren't in the fire code now. And the building code, if it did at one point, pick those up and have them in the building code, they're not in there anymore. So if you were to, if you're in a city that doesn't require the separation for a reason like that or because it looks funny to have two buildings real close. Then uh, somebody said, well, where does that come from? Well, it comes from our local city. It's what we want. It's not required by the building code. It's not required by the fire code. Uh, so the next one, M, architectural standards. And this is pretty much uh taken from another part of our code, which is pretty typical in codes. Um, there's, for any kind of single-family dwelling, just to make sure that you don't get a barracks appearing house or a whole subdivision full of them. A local development code will have some standards. And so some of them are like the pitch of a roof and eaves sticking out over so many inches. Uh, and these different things here, they just, they're architectural features. And if you have some or all of these, then you'll have an acceptable looking house. It won't look like a military barracks. And then that'll make the neighborhood look better. It'll improve apparently property taxes or it will, I should say, improve property values. Of course, as your value goes up, you gotta pay more property tax, so maybe it's not so good to have your value go up. But anyway, so all of these things, that's kind of where they come from. And the idea is they have to be objective. Can't be subjective where the staff would say, oh, we got a building permit for an ADU. And it says something like, oh, the exterior siding has to be similar to the exterior siding of the house or the neighborhood. Well, similar, what's that? Well, it's subjective. You can't have that. So anyway, uh, pitched roof, yeah, that's objective. It's gotta be at least a three-twelve. The next one, provide eaves at least six inches. Yeah, that's objective. And the ADU has to be recessed back at least one foot behind the uh primary building. That's objective. And then you have to provide at least three of the following design elements. And okay, they can do a dormer, cupola bay or bow windows, exterior shutters, covered or uncovered porch of a certain size and at least a couple pillars or posts associated with a covered porch. So all of those things are objective. Even though when you get into architectural stuff, it's real easy to let some subjective word enter in. And then that's when you can't allow that. So that's a quick run-through and it took a while because we've got a lot of standards. So I'll turn it back to the chair to take us through the discussion.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess to me, the best way to start on this is probably I would start, let's go briefly point by point. And see what we come up with. And then as we get down through those points, that may lead to a larger amount of discussion, so.
Could, could I start by uh making a comment?
Yeah, yes, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, early on, uh, when ADUs uh came out and I, uh, the discussions of ADUs. Uh, I read through the standard and I found it uh hard to follow, hard to find the answers to things. And there was a lot of questions, why is there so much complexity? So from where I sat, I thought it would be a really good idea to take any kind of ambiguity out of the, the standards, you know, and uh, or uh, merge some things that might uh be logically merged together.
That makes sense.
You know, and uh, and take the confusion out. Cause if somebody wanted to uh, make application for an ADU. Uh, I personally would be hard-pressed to figure out what I was supposed to do.
Okay.
And that's, and that's my test. If I can't figure it out, then I'm not sure anybody else could. So tho- those would be my benchmarks.
Right, and, and in that respect, I think I'm going to guess we all can agree on the concept of make it so that it is a, a clear path. And like I said, when we first started this, no ADUs are going to be a part of our future. Let's create a pathway that includes ADUs in the community in such a way that the community benefits.
Yeah.
Now, so many, you know, before the state came along and said ADUs, you know, have to be allowed. Most communities were saying, no, I don't want them for this, that, the other reason. In my case, they just didn't want to change.
And well, the, the benefit to the community is the ability to understand. You know, uh, and, and if that's there, then it's, it's obviously a benefit. You know, it just makes the whole process easier for everybody.
Correct. So I'm, I'm, though, keeping those things in the back of our mind. Uh, and ADU being it, like on point A, an ADU may be attached or detached, whichever the case. I don't think that is unclear or ambiguous.
Oh, but I think it is.
They can build it either or.
Yes, but if they say it can be um attached, then if you go back over and you look at the setbacks of six feet.
It says a detached, a detached ADU.
Okay, so that only says under the standards, okay, where is it, the six feet thing?
A detached ADU shall be separated from the primary dwelling. So that's, that, so that's where the clarity comes in. Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't do that. The only thing I see with this is it says but an attached or detached garage may not be converted to an ADU. Now, that to me becomes ambiguous when we say that uh an ADU, that an ADU may take an existing structure and convert it. You know, particularly an existing legal non-conforming. Now, you're saying dwellings, and so I'm guessing dwellings is being separated from an accessory structure like a detached garage. So I suppose the question there is, why was the uh attached, decat- detached garage singled out as not being allowed for conversion? And so, so, so long as the criteria is still preserved, like if they take a attached garage out, if they then have to build a separate detached garage.
Well, the city requires a garage for single-family dwelling. It can be a detached garage or an attached garage or maybe they're attached. And so if that ends up being turned into an ADU, then they're gonna have to replace that somewhere else on the property. And virtually none of the properties are big enough to do that. Certainly in any subdivision lot in the last, I don't know, thirty or forty years. There's not enough room to convert a garage and then go out and somewhere on the property build a new garage. And so apparently the planning commission at that time, just said, well, let's not lead people to think that they can convert a garage. At step one, we'll let them know, the answer is no.
You can't, because it's, because it's probably more likely that if they can't convert the garage, it's, there's still the likelihood that whether it's attached or detached, there may be sufficient other space within that lot to still place an ADU. And maybe easier to place that ADU than going through all the other rigmarole, destroy shall we say, destroy one structure that requires a replacement structure that actually takes more time, money and effort than just leave that one alone and pick another spot, another type of location.
Yeah, and the, I guess you could say the uh debate team approach to this. If somebody wanted to make it look stupid, they'd say, well, you allow an ADU in a garage. But then you take away my ability to do that because you require the garage to be replaced. And they'd say, that's not rational, that's stupid. Why give me something and then take it away in the end of the sentence? And so again, that's, well, it might be why the city decided to just make it clear, you can't convert a garage.
If you have a, uh, a two-story garage. Okay, with an area for storage up above, that could be converted.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you would not be converting the parking in the garage.
Not be converting.
You'd be converting the attic or the other habitable space up above.
And in Lafayette, there's uh, there's probably, you know, oh, half the community has got carports instead of garages. So uh is there, is there sort of a conflict going on that I'm not aware of?
I, no, I don't think there's a conflict. I think what you're seeing is that when properties are built, they can, they are either, they're required to have either garage or carports. They're required to have parking. And it's when that structure was built, it's, it was the choice that was made at the time. Whether it be by the builder or the homeowner or both, there was a choice as opposed to it has to be this or maybe it's the carport fit better in one and that's what was chosen or.
Yeah, okay, in this case, you know, there's, if you get rid of, or converted garage, then you have to replace it with garage. Okay, but let's say you wanna take down the carport and put in a, an ADU. There's nothing that says what you have to do to replace the carport.
So your carport is still parking. But in here, it just says garage, doesn't say carports. Maybe add in Okay.
Carports.
Carports or some kind of covered parking.
Mm-hmm, if you, if you got it to begin with, then you've got to be consistent with maintaining it.
I, yeah, I, I see the point. I, yeah, I see the point. So the concept of the statement is correct, it's just we, the language it needs to incorporate the issue of carports, you covered parking where, so that if code currently says a house has to have covered parking or carports, and therefore it's built that way. If an ADU comes along, that same basic requirement needs to be preserved. But that, like you say, that does not necessarily mean, from what you're saying, that uh, they couldn't, like you said, they could knock out the carport, replace it with garage, it's got ADU over it. Perhaps what we'll get into there is if it turns out that that carport is in the front of the, the main structure. Now to turn that carport, to try to turn that carport into garage and ADU, we put it in front of the main structure. And bingo, now they can't, that, so, and, and again, that's already spelled out in the code, so. Perhaps maybe some of this clarity is a little cleanup of language, but maybe it's the order that things appear.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, maybe A is the maximum number of units, one, okay, right there, you've said you can have one ADU and it's the very beginning. Then you go into floor area. You tell them how big it can be and what the guidance says on that. It's a separate standalone item. There, that way there's no confusion there.
Now, I like where you're going in, uh, because what's not clear is that uh, the uh, the definition of an ADU can also be a converted attic. Or a basement apartment.
That would be the attached, yes, that would be attached.
But you know, when people hear the word attached, they don't think basement.
That's
They think a structure is attached.
Uh, they don't think, but, and that's a good point.
I don't think uh, of a basement is being an, an attachment.
But it has to have a separate entrance.
So then I, we'd have to create a bit more as attached if it has
So what's not clear here is, what, what constitutes the potential of, of, of an ADU?
And I don't think, when it comes right down to it, I don't think whether it's a separate entrance or an internal, I don't think if you look at some of the state law that says it has to, I don't think state law gives indication or direction that it has to be one or the over. State law just says, if you wanna call this chunk of your house an ADU and rent it out as an ADU. The fact that somebody using that comes into the same front door, the same side door that you use and goes off to their place in the dwelling.
Yeah.
I, I think that, yeah.
This language is using words.
This language is using words that are in the definition, and I'm just realizing now that the staff report should have included the definition from the definition section of ADU. And it's not a big deal, because the definition in the development code is word for word the same definition in the state law. Uh, it's a good idea when you're writing local code, if you're gonna define something that is also defined in state law, to use that definition. That way you won't ever get turned sideways by somebody saying, the state law defines this term this way, but your local code defines it a different way. Oh no, what's going on? And if that difference gives them a benefit in what they wanna do, and the code is really saying, no, you can't do that, all of a sudden they will leverage, use that as a wedge, and so the definition in state law is the same definition in the code. And for example, in A, it says that it's like in addition to a primary dwelling, and, or it can be detached, or the conversion of a portion of the primary dwelling. So with a basement or an attic being a portion of a primary dwelling, then that's where basements and addicts come in. And, uh, often, I mean, generally it's not gonna be someone who's never been involved in construction. You know, somebody that's, they bought their first house, and they didn't have any idea what they were doing when they were buying it. They didn't read any of the pile of documents that are presented to you at closing. They just signed on the line and they became, well, then they put, you know, sometime later, then he said, I wanna do an ADU. Well, they would hire a contractor, and the contractor who is available, or who is knowledgeable and understands the jargon, would have no trouble doing what needs to be done to get them an ADU, as long as they pay the money. He will get the plans, he will get the, the building permits, he will do the construction, and get it through the process, get a certificate of occupancy. And so, a, an unknowing resident doesn't need to know because they would hire a professional to do it.
Then for clear, but, but for the clarity side of things, maybe it's, and I think, I think, maybe how this one, we wanna have this written is, where it says, ADU stands where applicable, where allowed, ADU shall conform to the following standards. Subject to the definition, uh, the state definition of ADU, and then just have a little, you know, right there, boom, right at the top, right above A, so that the state definition is in italics, so here's, here's the state definition that guides the following items that are below, right?
Well, that's not typical code writing, because the definitions are in the definition section.
Okay.
And you generally don't pull the definitions from the definition section and repeat them over section.
Or just have a little thing that says, C, ADU definition. Yeah, so, something that references it, so the person knows, hey, I need to go look at this if there's some question. In other words, yeah, maybe we haven't written codes like that ever before, but maybe it's time to
Change.
Maybe it's time to change and make the code itself easier to use. Doesn't mean it's gonna, the whole code's gonna be done, but let's use it as perhaps a guinea pig, or an example of, hey, here's a little better way of actually writing the code. So it's not a code, doesn't get too wordy, but it's a little more guided.
Well, if you use that approach, then, and we're talking about it in terms of ADU, so in the ADU standards, it might say, where allowed, ADUs, parentheses, C definition in section, whatever, shall conform to the following standards. Okay, we got it covered for ADUs. And then every other term, all the other terms in the development code, when they're used, and if they're defined, we're gonna have to go through the code, and every time there's a term that's defined, put in parentheses, C definition in definition section, whatever number. And I am not familiar with any code that does that. A person, but I guess it's just kind of a common sense thing, if there's a term in the code, then a person would look up to see what the definition is in the definition section.
Until you find, until you find out that there's no definition with the definition section.
Planner, or the local community development clerk, and say, yeah, I'm reading about ADUs, and, uh, I don't know, what is an ADU? And they'd say, oh, well, it's in the definition section. And they'd say, oh, yes, of course, why didn't I think of that?
Usually have a definition.
No, no, I, I, I know, I know, I know what he's getting at, I'm just proposing a thought today, so. But like I say, as far as, at least some of the cleanup is the order, so like I'd say, I'd make number, A would be the number of units, one. B would be the floor area, because that's kind of a standalone thing, and so those two points become very clear. C could, uh, D and E could become C and D, and, you know, in other words, in other words, what we're calling A, what can be built, once you've defined the number of units, defined the area, defined the type of construction, and what the size can be, those things each stand up, then you can take and put in what the ADU may be. Now it becomes a little more fuzzy. Someone's gotta look up definition, someone's gotta think about it a little bit more, so that.
I thought maybe move A after I, where it talks about existing, converting.
F, G.
Put it after I.
H.
If you could do and convert a dwelling, but not a garage.
And I would actually combine D and G.
You combine, okay, D.
Building construction, ADU shall comply with the applicable, uh, Oregon, uh, building code requirements, and G says, an ADU shall comply with the development standards of the underlying.
I, I, I agree with that. That, that, that's also a good call.
That's referring to two different things.
It's referring to two.
Good code writing, the more times you combine things together.
The more like it's missed.
Uh, okay, why would you combine things into one when it's two different things? Just leave, probably it's good to put D and G one right after another.
Well, but, yeah.
Would be better.
That would be better, that would be better. Keep them separate, because that way that's a little more redundant visually, too, you know, if you combine them, you have a chance to miss the one. I've seen that happen.
And it's pretty easy to come up with what ought to be kind of the first and second, third maybe. But real soon after those first two or three or four, it's like, well, yeah, there's no real rhyme or reason to all these things. They're what they are, and, yeah, as soon as we try to put it in some order, somebody will come along and say, well, that doesn't make sense to me, and so.
Oh, well, no, that's true. We're trying to make it a little, a little better, but we know we can't please everybody.
I do have one question.
Yes.
The difference between L and M three, where it says they have to be six feet apart, but then that says it has to be recessed back one foot. That kinda confused me a little bit, because if it's already six feet away, it's already the back.
Between the building.
Between.
Six, six feet would be between the structures, the one foot means go to the back of that, go to the back of the house, of the primary dwelling. Drop it, go, the front of the house and the back of that.
That's right.
Okay, so then it should say one foot behind the building, I would say, front elevation, because there's also rear elevation.
Yeah, so, L is the separation between M three is that, and we should probably add something, the front elevation.
Building front elevation of a primary dwelling, facing a public or private street, yeah. So you can have that, so if you had a big, big, let's say you had a really big side yard.
Yeah, the front.
You could, that accessible could be in the side yard, the front of it would have to be one foot back from the front of the primary dwelling. But, that, the two sides of house, this can be, have to be six, so it'd be a six-foot length pathway between. That's if you get a big enough, yeah, yes, yes, so they're two different things. But, yeah, I, I was thinking about that myself, when, on, on number M three, it's like, is it the front elevation or the rear elevation? It's the front elevation. So if you've got a big enough side yard, you could build an ADU.
And, and what's the, what's the purpose of that one foot? To give some architectural relief to the front wall of the house. Some, some people are interested in the architecture, and instead of having just a flat wall all the way across, and then have the ADU also, you know, if it's a, an addition to the house, well, if you're gonna add on, drop it back a foot, at least one. Oftentimes you don't do it just one foot, they'll do it two or three or four, to give it some real change on that front elevation. But that's why I say some cities have like one or two standards, other cities have a bunch. And the cities that have one or two standards, they just leave it up to the developers, to the property owners, and if they wanna add on to the house and have their front elevation even longer, with no offset, okay, so what? Other communities say, oh, well, yeah, there is a what, we just wanna have some architectural relief on that front elevation.
And it makes it so that the primary structure is just that teeny bit forward visually and stands out.
That sounds subjective to me.
Well, the measurement that, the visual side is subjective, but the dimensions are not.
Oh, no, it's, you know, it says one foot.
Yeah, okay.
It says at least one foot, so it can be one, or two, or ten, or twenty.
Now, do you know what a portico share is, Jim?
Well, in my mind, I've got kind of a idea, I'm not real good on architectural terms.
I, because I've looked at this a little bit recently, and, and looking at this, this one foot requirement, here's a counterpoint to this one foot. A portico share is basically a, think of it as a driveway covering that's attached to a structure.
Yeah, like on a lot of medical clinics now.
Like a medical dentist, or, uh, there are, there could be old Victorian houses that have a portico share. You literally can drive up, it's a full sixteen, twenty, twenty-five feet deep, you have doors that go to the house, so you can unload everything, so you would, if you had the design of the house could be such that here's your portico share, you drive through, your parking detached garages are in the back. Here's one house over here, but on that exact same front face plane, on the other side, here is your ADU. And the portico share serves both of them, common drive. But now, the front of that ADU might not be set back, or setting it back that one foot might not be within the designer, so that's the counterpoint to the one foot thing, but the one, you know, the one foot is.
Yes, in the architectural feature you were describing, it does not have a wall, it doesn't have an elevation. Where this is talking about the front wall of the primary dwelling.
It would be that other structure to the other side of that portico, there's this structure, this structure, they're connected by, it would be like a covered breezeway. There could be living structure all over the top of that as well, depending upon how it's built.
That would be, that'd have to be an existing structure that the portico shade is a breezeway for, correct? Because this is talking, looks like more so for new development, if you're gonna put in that, it has to be back one foot from the front of the primary.
Put it in, but it would also indicate that if you're gonna set up that second unit as an ADU, because it could have its own services and, and be an ADU, that all of a sudden, yeah, it's all built at the same time.
Okay.
It's all tied together, but this is the main structure. And this is literally set up as day one, as that ADU. Now, maybe it doesn't, maybe, maybe whoever sets it doesn't use it that way, but they could.
But no matter what, this is saying it has to be pushed back a foot.
Correct.
Um, at least a foot.
At least, at least.
At least a foot.
And again, that may not be a big deal, but it's just a kind of a, here's a potential issue that may or may not ever come up.
Now, is there, would there be a time, and should it be addressed? That if somebody wanted a, an ADU, but they wanted it attached to the house, okay, then, uh, they may not want that one foot setback. They might want a nice facade, but that section would be an ADU. Well, if it's an addition to the house, the, and it would be an ADU, then this is saying it needs to be recessed back at least one foot behind the elevation of the primary dwelling. Well, what I'm asking is if.
If it's a, if, yeah, I, I know, yeah, so perhaps, if you're gonna go down this path, M three, perhaps M three should address this one foot behind, um, it should say, okay, for one, two, three, and four, all of these things here, if we look at, you know, like design standards, dormers, cobblehead bay windows, perhaps it would be M would start off, architectural status, a detached ADU shall, because if you have a detached ADU, it's gonna have its own design structures. If you make it attached to the house, now the design structures of that attached ADU would typically follow the house, so again, like, uh, Mike was saying, now if you take that front wall and just extend it over another twelve feet, it just looks like somebody's making an addition to the house.
Yeah.
It'll be used as an ADU, but to, to the structure, it looks like an addition, and there would be no need to set it back one foot.
And on those additions for, uh, conversions attic or basement, all of this stuff, uh, A through F. Yeah, yeah.
May not be practical. May not be practical, yeah.
You're not gonna put a, a cupola on, in the attic, or in the basement, you know? Um, and that's one of my, uh, I, I thought A through F was, uh, overly restrictive. And, uh, because I, I drove around all over the place looking for cupolas, I couldn't find one. You know, and you start looking for other things, you know, uh, dormers and, and, uh, what have you. Um, I, I like the requirements of B and F on the porches for detached. But certainly not for attached.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't make any sense. Some of these things like cupolas, uh, you don't see very often, but if you don't list it as an architectural feature, and someone wants to have one, and it's not one of the allowed, or not one of those that counts toward the architect, the three architectural features, then they say, well, wait a minute, if Joe Blow could put up shutters, and to have that count as one of the architectural features, why can't my cupola count as an architectural feature? So even though they're very rare, the code language anticipates that a few people, you know, maybe once every ten years, might wanna do one, and that, okay, if they do, they should get credit for having the cupola as a feature.
And, well, so my, my, my thought, and I think, I think where you're coming to it, this, Mike, is, as I'm listening, it's perhaps these architectural standards, M, maybe they shouldn't be there at all. With one exception, that would be if we take point three, where it says be recessed back one foot, so we're kind of thinking that should apply to detached structures. Maybe that little feature, we should look at point L. A detached ADU shall be separated from the primary dwelling by at least, at least six feet, and be recessed back
One.
One foot, at, at least.
One foot.
Says at least one foot behind the building elevation of the primary dwelling facing block, so that number three gets incorporated kind of at L, so now you have the six foot, the one, at least one foot, they're working together, and then, then everything, uh, for F of M goes away entirely.
Is that the architectural?
All the architectural stuff goes away, that way a person can, they would be free to incorp, oh, oh, yeah, give me just a second, yeah. They, they're, they'd be free to incorporate if it's attached, they'd be free to incorporate and make that addition to their primary structure that they're using, and incorporate all the designs of the house, or they'll be able to take that detached structure and make it such that it's architecture, it's what they choose, and it may be complementary to the house, or it may be a contrast to the house. And they both work.
Yeah, the reason for these kinds of standards, and the reason why these dormers and bay windows and things are in your code already, and require at least three of them in any new house, is because if you get into a situation where someone or the industry, the economy, is kinda like it is now, then people may be starting to build houses that are not architecturally like you would want them to be.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's always that risk of just having a box.
And then with the ADU, a detached ADU, oh boy, we'll just, you know, make it a box the cheapest we can. And it's okay because we know somebody will rent it from us. And it generally, or gradually, I should say, over time, you have a decline in the quality of the housing stock in the city. And if you don't mind that, then take the standards away.
But, but the, but, yeah, and I realize, yeah, I, I, I think it would, give me just a second, Joe, because I audience, sorry. I'll hold my thought for a minute. Uh, public participation, audience, state your name, and please ask your question away.
My name is Marie Sproul. Um, I live at twelve eighty-two Third Street, space number fifty-nine. Have you looked at the buildings that have been built just on the other side of the, the div? In the, the building, there's a um, renovation company, and then there's two domed layered builds that are sitting right together. Have you ever seen those?
Out here, if I have, I have not paid attention.
There are two boxes stuck together with a six foot, the, so, six foot, okay? They are the ugliest buildings that are, that, that um, are in Lafayette. Now, you take these, you take these houses here, that are three, four, five hundred thousand dollar houses, and you stick a box next to them in one of the houses.
Yeah.
You're gonna have a problem.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I totally agree.
The, the reason that those standards are there is to make them aesthetically looking good and to fit with the neighborhood. So it's kind of a, you know, just a regular um, pass through. But, I mean, if you take those out and say that somebody can just do whatever they want.
No, I, but it, it is, I don't think we're gonna say that.
Well, that's, that's exactly what he said.
Well, I, I would argue it.
Well, and, and, and then keep in mind, I throw, just keep in mind, this is a work session, so when I throw that idea out there, what I'm getting at is like, by throwing those, that's the same, by throwing those design standard out, then things can go one of two ways. Yes, they could go down the path of the ugly box. We all know that's possible. But they could also go down the path of something beautiful. Now, where those two things come into play are going to be based upon the person that's building it.
Yeah.
Their vision, but also what their pocketbook says. So if we as a city start requiring to exaggerate designed features that make it pretty, but that adds fifty thousand dollars to the cost of whether it's a house or an ADU, but it adds some dollar amount to that, that would be, and I use fifty thousand to as an exaggerated term, but it adds that to it, then we as a city are basically saying.
Don't want ADUs.
We don't want poor people to live here. If you can't afford to pay eight hundred thousand dollars for a house, we don't want you as a resident. And I, and then, well, I, I realize that.
That isn't what you're talking about at all. You're talking about ADUs that are added to the house.
But we're talking about ADUs that, so.
And what I'm saying here is that a planning commission is supposed to set the standards for the subdivision. If you say, oh, just do whatever you want. You box or whatever, if you're gonna set your standards on price, then it was about a problem. That was that by a piece.
Well.
True, and that's, yes, Joe, yes, yes, Joe.
Thank you.
Yes, Joe, I, yes, she did, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have a question back to you. Did you, you made a comment, do the current housing standards for our neighborhood, they have design features like this?
They're required to.
So to me, if our primary homes have these requirements, I think it's natural that the ADUs would have them as well.
I'm agreeing with that, but I'm not so sure that the uh,
Or maybe do we need more options?
Requirements for new construction is going to state, you gotta have a cupola. None of them, they have to have a cupola. We're letting them know that out of these several design features, they can pick whatever they want to do. Now, if you don't just cupula, and somebody wants to have one of those as a design feature that counts, well, it's not listed. We're not gonna count that. You gotta provide some other design. In order to have an ADU, a detached ADU, okay? Uh, you have to come up with three out of the five or whatever it is.
I can't.
Three of the following elements.
Maybe.
So you wind up with a front porch, that's two of the elements, and you gotta pick one of the other four. Okay, but if the current structure, the primary structure, doesn't have any of that, you're forcing uh, a non-conformity within a neighborhood because it doesn't conform to the primary structure. You're saying you gotta have this, you gotta have this. It's alarming so much as it is having new construction be minimal, and this is a minimal in Kaiser. And I, I, you probably all have, just like with any city, when the name is mentioned, you think about, no. You have some image of Kaiser. And the image of Kaiser, because it started out not as a city, it wasn't a city until eighty-two. And it was just a leapfrog subdivision area outside of Salem. And it had been having, you know, the county's own residential. And so there were just a whole bunch of residences around out there. And uh, so the city, when it did incorporate, it knew that it was kind of the low-end housing market of the Salem metro area. And over the years, the Kaiser council said, we want to improve our image. We want to attract people here because they know that it's gonna be better. There's gonna be a standard, a minimum standard to build houses to. Well, over the years, uh, the planning commission and the council, particularly the planning commission, has been really interested in adding how many standard or how many architectural features you have to meet. It used to be like three out of ten or twelve that were listed. And they were all kind of the standard sorts of things that you see anyway, but at least it provided the base so that nobody could drop below that, which is what the existing old post World War Two housing was in Kaiser. And so now you've gotta do like seven or eight out of twenty items.
So let me make, let me, let me, let me pose two other thoughts here. So, design standards, yes. I don't, I'm not trying to say that I disagree with them. I'm just posing that, that's one possible path, but perhaps we need a letter G that would say, other design elements not listed but clearly such can substitute, or that would be a G where you have, let's say, as an example, maybe it could be, there are shingles that are a design feature, even though it doesn't say, a, a, a shingled E and, but some ownership, or maybe there's wood, or uh, like you say, a covered porch, or with at least two pillars for a covered porch, but what about a covered porch where it comes out? But instead of two posed pillars, here's your piece of glass that comes out, and you have two rods that go up. Right? So those rods, that falls in the category of a, of a more modern design. Or maybe we need to have uh, part of a G or, uh, you have G and H or something that says uh, the, if an owner does not include the above design elements, their proposed structure, as long as they can show that their proposed structure is consistent.
Oops, subjective.
Or that, that, their, their structure follows the same basic design as their primary structure.
Yes, subjective, same.
If they're, if they're primary, if their primary house, if their primary house, let's say their primary house doesn't have a porch, it doesn't have dormer windows, it doesn't have a cupola, it doesn't have any of that. But they want to have that small place.
Match and be complementary.
Match.
Match, same, those are all subjective.
Oh, there are.
But you can boil it down, uh, we're trying to get to the intent of.
It's not about, yeah, it's not about the, it's about the intent. And yes, intent is always.
Well, we gotta have language at some point that is objective. Oh, well.
I, yes.
I'd like to see what the current architectural requirements for new construction, residential construction. If it requires a cupola.
Or a louse.
These don't require.
It's not required.
They don't require.
Louse.
Requires, it's.
You have to pick.
Options.
Yes.
It says, it says you have to pick.
This, then, 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 this, three. This list should then be much, much longer and greater.
Yeah, I mean.
Not, not ten items, but there might be five hundred.
You're, you're exactly right.
Yes, Joe.
That would be my point exactly. You were saying, Jim, that there was twenty of, you had to pick eight out of twenty.
Yeah, something like that, fifteen or twenty.
Maybe three out of fifteen or ten options instead of the six. So there could be other options that you could match accordingly with your current layout.
I mean, I've had a number of houses, I've never had any of those.
I would be afraid though to, I mean.
Well, in Lafayette's neighborhood, aren't you, with every house with a porch, and they all have pillars?
Well, yes.
I, I agree with E and F as a, as a minimum standard for detached entryway porches. I agree with that. It's just this other design stuff.
But it could be to somebody's liking.
But what if, well, for me, you know, what about you have, and you've seen this, where you, what I call the, it's the Pacific Northwest modern design type house, where instead of having that port, covered porch that covered
I know what you're talking about.
It's covered by two iron rods that go up to the top, so it's, it's, instead of being supported, it's suspended.
Or knee braces.
It could be, or it could be knee braces coming up or something, so. Either above or below, so if you just say two pillars on a covered porch, you're stuck with one choice.
Maybe if we get a list of design features, we can.
That's what I'd like to see.
And expand and expand.
Of all new construction, so that we can determine, you know, is this restrictive or is this just a partial list? You know, because if this is just a partial list, it doesn't say it.
So, yes.
This is what you can have. Pick, pick three elements.
And, and, and then, and then why, and then why restrict it to a pitched roof of at least three and twelve? Why not allow a flat roof? Because hey, it's a single, if it's a single level structure.
Yeah, yeah.
And the person wants to have a set of stairs that go up, and now here you've got this nice deck. You can go out there in the summertime and sit back and have your, and enjoy your glass of wine while you're watching the sunset in Lafayette from your deck patio that happens to be the roof of your structure.
Wow. That's pretty uncommon for people to use a roof as a floor, and if it is a roof as a floor, it has to have a minimum smoke.
There will be a little water, but that can be done.
If it's for that purpose, you have to have railing around it.
Yes.
Safety and stoppers.
But that all goes to building code. So the building code covers that side of things, but the idea is, why restrict it so you can't have, and it might not be the whole thing that's a flat roof. It could be just a portion of it. I would say, then let that be allowed as well.
But was that only the reason to maybe put a deck on top to keep it flat, or is that an architectural style for that?
That deck might, that deck, in that case, to me, would be, it's twofold. Primarily, it's about the function. Now you get a little extra space, you let it go sit up on it, and you enjoy the sunset. From, and this, and the star, literally the star and the scot. And then there's, it also could be.
Looking into your nearest windows.
You start getting into the backyard of architecture. And, yeah, and, even, and even with it, but even with two-story houses that are being built that are ten feet apart, everybody's looking at everybody's backyard, so.
Uh, here again.
Privacy kind of goes down.
I would propose re, looking at, and for all of us to get educated on the current uh, architectural standards for new construction. The current, we're talking about new construction here. Okay, or remodels, or remodels, you know, and look at it. Now, when it comes to, when it says it has to be provided pitched roof, three twelve, okay? A four twelve would work.
It just says at least three twelve. So, yeah, anything greater than three twelve, it just says at least.
Okay, another one's, I'm good then.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm good.
Right. So then we would want to look at two things. One, what are the current design standards for our residential
Yep.
Structures, what, what, what do they have to meet within Lafayette for newer remodels? So we would want to pull that information. And look at that and compare to what we have and make it so that that list on new construction mimics what's going to be with respect to the ADU. And then I would also say we need to expand this list of design features significantly. It wouldn't be, you know, it would be more along the lines of you need to incorporate twenty out of the following two hundred. And there should literally be a book of, here's the book of design features as a plan, as usable within Lafayette, and that would be the kind of thing that could be added to over time.
Can you talk about looking at those? Or we should just look at the uh, standards for single-family dwellings? Is that all you can?
We want to, we want to look at single-family dwellings, and then, and then compare that to what we've got. Make it so that the ADU, they, they start to, they, they start to mesh.
Yeah, there you go.
And then have, and then as those two mesh, then the next step is look at the design features and expand that list, and make it so that that list becomes a living, breathing doc, living, breathing type of document.
Now, I don't think we're gonna give this to two hundred things.
No, it might not be. I, I exaggerate this too, but it's certainly gonna be more than ten or twenty. As you've got porticoes, you've got pergolas, you've got.
But if a city the size of Kaiser has how many?
Twenty, I don't know exactly.
Twenty, why would the city of Lafayette need more than that?
Well, because you never know what somebody's gonna come up with as a, as a creative solution to something that is a design or architectural element, and if it's not on the list, to sit down and say, oh, well, it's not on the list, we're not gonna count it.
Yeah, well, and if they only need to meet three, and they are such easy to comply with items, then they're not gonna have any trouble meeting the three. And if they want to have a cupola or a pergola or a whatever, then fine, they got the money to do it, and they go do it, and it's not an issue. Because the first three are really simple to meet.
And all I did, I had is the first three out of this list that we've got. What if the person designing it doesn't want any of them?
But they need to go build in a different town.
Then they.
If they don't want.
That's, that's the problem. There's the problem.
If they don't want to be the different standards.
There's the problem.
Are we gonna welcome them with arms?
We want to create standards.
A box, and we'll be happy to have you build a box in our town.
We, we want, we want to create standards that let people.
So the standards for our primary homes are in our book, and there's a list.
Somebody's.
So do we really need more than for what we have for our primary homes for a necessary dwelling?
What number do we need?
It's page.
But then you end up.
Two point three dash thirty-nine.
But then you end up with homes that all look the same.
Wow, uh, where's that at?
Two point three dash thirty-nine.
Okay, I'm looking at, is that under code or zone?
That's the page.
Under code or zone?
It's the developer code.
I don't know, it's what I have.
It's Lafayette zoning code developments, page two dot three dot thirty-nine. It's going to be in section two dot three one six dot oh three.
And it's the standards. And there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, give me that number again, I can't, I can't remember it. Two, what, two point three?
Two point three one six.
Dash thirty-nine.
Well, the page number is two point three dash thirty-nine.
It's the page number.
So in the lower right-hand corner of the page, if you get to the page, it'll be easier to find the section number.
Got the E's, got the dorm.
Two point three thirty-nine, and then in section two, three one six on that page.
Offsets. Not expensive additions.
So, so you're at two point three forty, zero thirty-nine, there you go, your left hand there, standards. Bottom, bottom portion, yeah, and then that goes on to the next page.
Oh, there it is. There's your cupola. Why is there no pergola? Why, why is there a hooching posts in here? You know, you gotta have a place to tie up your horse.
You don't have a place to keep your horse. That's the pillars.
So the problem then is, yeah, there's nothing wrong with.
So why can't they just take from that list?
Why can't that, that, to me, that list should be expanded? That makes it, that, that, that make it better.
Your standard then would be to comply with the single-family development design standards. Just a simple one line.
Just a simple one-liner.
That would be a good way of going.
With that would be, that would be. Design standards, section. Two point three one six point O three.
That would be one, yeah, that'd be a way of doing it.
I mean, how many of these new new home applications? You know, are denied because they don't have one of those. Elements.
They're not denied because the builder builder has already got these built into his 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 designs.
They already know about these standards.
Yeah, yes, John.
They're in the design to begin with, and so every house is a. No house is denied because they don't have at least three of these.
And none of these houses have space to pillen maybe.
Your 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 question.
Uh, the question was, I I like that, just looking at, just going off of the the primary standards. But there's one, for instance, um, the covered. Square footage of a porch, twenty-five foot for the ADU. But for the primary, it has to be at least a hundred square feet, so you have to.
But that that hundred square feet doesn't say that it's the covered porch, it just says a porch of at least a hundred square feet.
That's the front porch.
Or a front porch.
Covered or uncovered porch, at least twenty-five square feet area.
Front porch, at least four hundred square feet, covered front porch entry. So you can have either or under our. Uh. Housing standards, but on the ADU. Uh, covered and uncovered at least twenty-five square feet.
That's quite right, right?
Yeah, it's not big.
It's not big.
I know it's not.
But these standards are so minimal that. They don't even enter in as a problem.
But yeah, mimicking our residential building standards would be.
Then it's something, it's less likely for people to complain, because it's like, well, I gotta build my house to that, so it makes sense.
Are we defeating the purpose of putting in an ADU to have a reasonably priced. Property for like a granny flat or whatever by complicating it.
But you also.
By really pushing these standards.
Yeah, but you also have to, like, people.
There there's gotta be some kind of balance between the two.
You should protect who already has.
Investments.
Their investments in in Lafayette. And. Yeah, was that?
And 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 I agree that we shouldn't push the price. But I also agree with the comments that if you look like, okay. A bay or a bow window, okay, if you incorporate that into the design itself. Is that going to be a little more costly than just a flat wall with a window? Maybe, but. It's going to add. A few hundred dollars to the cost because the window itself is likely to be a flat window, it doesn't matter.
Normally, that's what we improve.
Right, so you you add a little bit of cost by having that window moved out. But that cost would add, shall we say. Hundreds of dollars just because of the change in the wall structure. But it wouldn't add ten thousands of dollars to the cost. In other words, yeah, a little bit. But you don't add a lot. And there's a difference between those.
Okay.
Most places, most people would prefer, I think, a covered porch. As opposed to an open porch, I mean, it rains here, you know, six months out of the year. So you're probably going to incorporate something like that, a covered porch anyhow. So maybe if you say, just to exaggerate, five by five is twenty-five square feet.
Well.
Maybe at the minimum that someone would put in if they just wanted a little covered awning. Maybe that covered awning would be three by three is nine feet. Yes, that's going to add a little bit of cost. To that, the thing I think we should probably do is. Uh. At least two colors or posts associated with covered porch. I I think the, how that covered porch is supported. Should. Be changed.
If it's gonna cover five feet, you.
Well.
You end up with a span that needs to be supported somehow.
Well, yeah.
Could the post, what you're talking about?
It well, if 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 they go to a, yeah, it's fun, but if you go with a smaller three by, that's ninety. The difference in cost for some of that may not be.
It says pillars or posts, and to me, a post.
Well, we may be getting a little bit off.
Poster loses, but.
Objective here, which is, you know.
I would say.
Which is reasonable, but it's not, uh, to be talking about costs, that's a moving target anyway.
Right, because it's today, the costs are high and two years, they may drop back down, so.
So I think, you know, going from my premise, you know, I I look at that and. And my my gut says it's overly restrictive. It's it's coming up with choices that not. Everybody wants to have those choices. Not that it's a free-for-all, but there's other options, you know, than what what's listed there.
Well, I already put on my list because it sounded to me several minutes ago that there was consensus. That, uh, we need to add more choices. So next month, I'll come back with more choices.
Yeah. And 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 we should, at a minimum, we should follow the design features of the residential house. This, but at the same time, we should look at adding more features. As allowable.
Yeah.
To choose for, and that could all, that could also apply to the residential as well. Because if I didn't apply to both, and now we make both better.
Yeah, I thought just a couple of minutes ago that I heard consensus. That it would be a good idea to, instead of listing. Architectural features in the ADU section, just have a one-liner saying, ADU shall comply with the single-family dwelling.
Yes, yes.
I like that.
Willing, that that list of options would be.
Increased, would be increased, yes, yes, yes. That's that's, you've got that right.
Let those.
Simple and clear. Okay, I like that. So I I I think at this point, uh.
Or Jim's got homework.
Jim's got a, we've got a very clear sense of direction on. How to move forward with this. And so I think at least for tonight. It sounds like the work sessions, this side of the work session. Can be closed until our April twenty-first meeting.
That's how productive, good job, guys.
Do we have any new business, Jim?
Well, an update on what you, uh. Concluded last month about fence standards. Because the council, even though they put a time limit on trying to figure out the fence situation. What was it, eight months or something? Um, and I'm sure the council would extend that if for some reason they didn't have the.
They've already moved the fence. They just got one in and moved it.
Well, yeah, they, last month, Ben, the person that lives there, explained. That in order for the commission, if any commissioners drove by. He had his, either he did it or his son, his fence contractor, moved the fence out of the right-of-way. Put it on the property line, which is what they were proposing. And that way, it would show any commissioners that drove by what it would look like. And so, uh, that's why it is the way it is now. But the. Uh, proposed amendment needs to come through the planning commission for a public hearing. You make then, after the hearing, you make a recommendation to the council. The council holds a public hearing and makes a decision. So that hearing is scheduled for your April meeting. And that's, part of that is giving a thirty-five-day notice to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. That a provision of our development code is going to be changed, or is proposed to be changed. And that then is posted by DLCD on their website. And some folks like development groups, uh, the State Home Builders Association, for example. They subscribe to be able to get into that list of every change proposed by every city and county throughout the state. Other groups like environmental groups, Thousand Friends of Oregon, for example. They also subscribe because those groups have an interest in what local governments are doing. The home builders don't want the local government to sneak by some requirement that would be costly to home builders. Environmentalists don't want local governments to sneak by something that would give up or allow. Who knows what, the destruction of riparian corridors. And so, uh, these days, the Fair Housing Council of Oregon and the Housing Land Advocates. Uh, they are subscribers to that, and so. Even though we aren't doing anything that addresses housing or home builders or environmentalists. By changing our site or our fence regulations. That's for what we have to do. And DLCD, the department staff, they're not gonna care because none of the statewide goals say a peep about fences. But we need to let the State Department know that we're gonna amend our code. Because they keep a copy or keep track of all the amendments, no matter what they are. So that thirty-five-day notice went in whenever it was, a week or two ago. And that allows the planning commission to have its hearing on, what is it, April twenty-one?
April twenty-one.
Yeah, so that's one item that'll be on the agenda. And we'll also include a continuation of this work session on ADU standards. And if the hearing is done in a expeditious period of time. Then we'll have time to address this again. If for some reason the fence standard hearing takes more time than anticipated, then that's fine. And if we don't get to this, then we'll get to it in May.
That sounds like, that sounds like a perfect plan. Okay? Any old business.
And I might add that. There is a bill forty, a house bill forty sixty-four, I guess it was. Passed by the legislature this session. And it. Um, is related to housing again. Every session for the last four or five sessions, and of course, they've been having annual sessions now where. Let's see, this is an even-numbered year, it's like a a four-week or five-week session, just a short thing. And then in the odd-numbered years, it's six months or whatever. But in every session for the last several years, they have amended the state law on housing. Because it's a national as well as state issue. So this time, they passed this bill. And since the, I think it was maybe the eighty-one session. There was a grand bargain crafted between the Oregon Manufactured Housing Dealers Association. And their lobbyist, Don Minor. And the legislature. And basically, back then, it was a situation where even though in nineteen seventy-six. A federal law was passed requiring all manufactured homes to be built to a federal standard. And that federal standard meant that they would be built to basically stick-built standards. So manufactured homes would be just as good structurally and so forth as a stick-built home. And so. From seventy-six up to eighty-one, the Manufactured Housing Dealers Association in Oregon just kind of lived with the fact that they were building. Manufactured homes to this new federal standard. But they still weren't allowed by state law to put a manufactured home on any lot where you could build a stick-built. And many cities, not so much counties, but many cities, maybe Lake Oswego could be used as an example. They said, no, we don't allow, you know, manufactured homes to be on a lot, any lot where a stick-built could be. Oh, my goodness, we are what we are, and we just don't allow those kinds of. Lower-cost housing to be intermingled with the typical housing. So, uh, the grand bargain was manufactured housing dealers said. If you pass a law saying that we can put a manufactured home on any lot. That allows a stick-built, we will allow, or we will agree with the bill, not oppose the bill. That would require manufactured homes to have some of these same things, like a pitched roof. Be at least a thousand square feet, be on a concrete perimeter foundation. And several other things to make them look more like a stick-built home. So the bill was passed. Every city in the state, and I guess it was county also. Uh, had to allow manufactured homes to be put on any lot that allowed a stick-built. With the caveat that those manufactured homes. Could be subject to local government standards that address pitched roofs, they're required to pitch roof. Required a minimum size of a thousand feet. And I don't know, there were like five or six, maybe seven items the local governments could require. So it was like basically every city in the county or in the state. Said, okay, we're adopting those standards, put them in their local code. And yeah, if they had to allow those dreaded manufactured homes on any lot in the residential zone in town. At least there were these standards that they would have to be built to. Okay, so great, from eighty-one to two thousand twenty-two, that's the way things were. But now with the national and the state housing situation the way it is. The legislature this session said, you know, those standards that manufactured homes have to meet. We're getting rid of those. That doesn't seem right. A stick-built home does not have to comply with standards like that, but a manufactured home does? Hmm, okay. So every city in the state, county too, will have to delete those standards from their development code. So as we move through on these ADU standards. I'm thinking it would be a good way to just add that state law requirement to delete things. With this ADU amendment. And that way, we won't have to run two processes and have two notices in the newspaper. And all, you know, two hearings and two everything, we can just do all of that in one process.
So that will potentially impact what we're doing.
Yeah, the state did not say that, like we were just talking about, we have some, what was eleven standards? For single-family dwellings?
Yeah.
And those. Throughout the state, apply to manufactured homes as well as stick-built. The state did not say you gotta get rid of those, so those will stay in effect. And that might be part of the reason why the state. Thought that it would be not a big deal to delete those half a dozen or seven standards that only applied to manufactured homes. Because they would still have to comply with whatever standards a stick-built house has to comply with.
Okay. Okay. Well.
Don't forget that you have until April fifteenth to submit your statement of economic interest.
Yes, thank you.
I did that two months ago, and they sent me a new notice, but I gotta do it again.
Hey, you gotta do it by by April fifteenth of every year.
We'll just log in and see if you're complete for this particular year, because they may have just sent out a batch and whatever, so. As long as you go in there and see, hey, it's there, here's my receipt, you're done.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
And I move that we adjourn this meeting.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Need a adjourn.
Yeah, the best part.
I might put that in the comments here.
I need to bring my whole confidence, so.
Yeah, well, because you said that comment, and I was like, oh.